...enough to advocate for enhancements. And several of the enhancements that have come out of this district are used in that system in other districts as well. The management is a parent portal. Required local testing. For example, moving into next year, we're going to be required to give testing in grades K through 12 in ELA math. And in 6 through 12, social studies and science as well. We're going to have to have foreign language. Let me see. Phys ed, art, music. So every subject has to have required local testing that we need to capture in the student management system. We have an individual student practice tool that students use to rehearse practice skills. So we have to feed the student information into that from our student management system. As you know, the emergency calling system, the basic information from there is exported from our student managing system. We have benchmarking and progress monitoring tool. That's what we referred to earlier as AIMS Web that is populated by information from the student management system. We have IEP Direct and RTIM which are both required to track the progress of students who are receiving RTI and who are classified. The elementary report card, the basic demographic information gets exported from there and we're going to be looking at having to use the elementary report card in that system moving forward because of some state requirements. The school lunch room, the school lunch system is also managed and informed from the student management system. The transportation system, the library system, school pictures, college application tracker, athletic database, and any data analysis that you would ask for is worked on from what lives in our student management system. So the question that Ralph asked earlier, I would have to go to our data person and work with her in terms of what it is that I need, how many years I need it, what I need compared for, and that's where it comes from. So I know you can't read that, so that's why I just gave you the other slides. But all of these things are what I just talked about, and they all are either going into or coming out of our student management system. The repository is information that we send to them. BARS is a product that the state has made available to us, not enough for free. But it has the testing information, and we can drill down a little bit and get some analysis from there. My Start is where when you look up the school report card on the stated website, My Start information is what feeds that. We now are required to scan the Regents exams, which is a little bit complicated on the personnel side. So that's how we get some information there. Level Zero upload of information is a complicated system by which we send information to the state. It's uploaded to what's called Level Zero. They then contact us, and we verify it at Level One. And then it's kind of like signed, sealed, and delivered. And then we verify it again at Level Two. That's every student's information. Student's information about their testing, about their placement, about their whatever the state has decided moving forward that they're going to do, we have to verify that. And then, of course, there's custom data analysis that has to be done for them should they send out a new request, which they do kind of regularly. Need to go back to my cheat sheet for this. There is something called Unique Identifier Audit System in which we are requested to give them certain information. There's also another part of this where we now have to have every student and every teacher has to have a unique identifier. Those unique identifiers get matched. So for example, if your child is in my class, their number and my number is matched. The reason for that is the state is matching to make sure, number one, that I'm highly qualified, number two, your child's score is going to count toward my evaluation, and the state is managing that. So we have to be sure that the right teachers and the right students are scheduled properly. And also, that continues also with attendance. And of course, right now, it's the three to eight testing, but I can tell you for sure it's going to be the all the testing as they move forward because I'm pretty sure they're going to put out some more testing. So that's the repository system. My role with all of this is to work with both sides of the house, the education information side and the technology side. And we work together to plan and vision. And the next slide will help you understand what I'm talking about, I hope. There are educational processes that are important and changing all of the time, and so that's, I have to be responsible for being out there, working in the field, reading, speaking to my colleagues, seeing what the next steps are. The technological processes, the tech side works on how are we going to implement this? For example, as the usage of laptops increased, the need for wireless access points increased. How we were going to do that, what was the most cost-effective way, that's the conversation between the tech side and myself. The management and support also goes between the two of us in that we have to be sure that there is a system in place where teachers can say something's not working and get it working. We can't tolerate having something planned that is totally on technology and not having it work. That's a loss of time. Even if it's fixed halfway through, you all know technology fails. We need to keep it up because your kids need to be learning in their 180 days of learning. The information and reporting, I work with that piece in terms of, again, staying up to date. I go up to State Ed, I get some information, or somebody shoots me an email to let me know what's coming down the pipe. I work with the information person to make sure that we have the capacity to produce the information we're going to be required to. These are some quotes that were made last, I think it was last week. "Technology is not an option for schools may or may not choose for their kids. It's a competency required to enter into the global economy." "Technology is making us more efficient and allows teachers to personalize education and track progress more closely." "Education needs to stop always being the laggard and step up in using technology." "A laptop for every kid is only about $1.25 a day." So not spending more, it's just spending smarter. "Great teachers with great technology transform learning." And in five years, there will be no more printed textbooks. Artie Duncan said that this month. The one thing I would like to say is this is where we get in trouble with politicians and people just making statements. Yes, it may be $1.25 to buy the hardware to put it in the child's lap, but we have to think about what kind of filtering we want. We have to think about what kind of safety we need for the kids. Are we going to load software? Aren't we going to load software? What are we going to do if they break? So there's a lot of people involved in the protection of the children and the hardware. So it's probably a little bit more than $1.25, and it also involves many more people. It's not just unwrapping the laptop. On March 14th, the Encyclopedia Britannica announced that it will no longer be producing a printed product.
Just, there was a slide, I didn't see if I could go back to the service requests slide before you forget it. We went from, I think it was only eighty more service requests with 80% increase in the amount of technology that we had.
We went from 760 to 80.
Eighty percent.
Eleven percent.
And then, BOSI's service went way down, even though we had 40% more. What did that more, do you have an explanation for that?
We have a phenomenal team. We have great systems. We have great communication, and we're dedicated to keep the technology working. So we have systems in place that they've worked on and refined so that we can fix more, we can do it faster, and we don't wait for them to come. There's also the BOSI savings, they're about $90, over $90 an hour, but they are eatable, so it comes down to about $48 an hour. But the wait time is too great. So their goals every year are to not be concerned with the number of service requests, but the speed with which they're answered. We also have a system in which people feedback. So every time you put in a service request, you are asked to give feedback about, was it effective? Is there anything we can do better, you know, and stuff like that? And they go over that all the time.
Just a question on service requests. But it might, and I'm just guessing, the fact that since we have more of the technology and the teachers are becoming more accustomed to using it and struggling with themselves, that might have put a level in the tech council that's going to go?
It's an opinion. I think it's true. When we started with technology back when we put a few computers in the classrooms, they weren't as easy to use either. But people are much more familiar with it. The other thing is, the students are much more familiar with it. So, you know, I remember the referrals that I got when we first had, you know, the mice here. Not these mice, these mice. You know, mice were our biggest concern because they were dealing with them. But kids like the technology and use it. I'm not saying that they're not messing with it, but I am saying that it's less of a problem. But I do know that they are responding to calls all the time, but I think that, I think you're right, that the training that we were able to do when we had the tech integrators and so forth, and the personal computer use that everybody has seems to have helped us in that regard.
I just wanted to see if I could go back to one thing. Steve, going back to the AIS, the scheduling, and obviously this is the school that we have such a large increase in AIS. Is the problem with getting more, I guess it's the students, do they have enough time or is it just teachers that we don't have enough availability for? Because you have to cut this program or that, or they can't do this music, they can't do that music. I mean, is that where we're at? Or you need more people to help, or is it just kids don't have enough time for that?
The challenges are both being able to schedule the students. That's why I made the recommendation in the sixth grade with foreign language, because that would free students up in their schedule from something that's not required to be able to take the AIS. So that would help in there. The other was also having enough providers, and that's why I made the recommendation to give to get where I was taking some sections of various other programs to come up with the money to pay for a full-time literacy expert so that more service can be provided. So it's twofold. It's one, being able to actually schedule the kids, and then the second is having enough providers to provide the service once the kids can be scheduled.
I mean, my goal was, you know, the 31,000 change that we're using at summer camp isn't as effective. Maybe we should be reallocating towards the middle school where we need the services right now in order to get us back to a level towards, as far as I'm concerned, justified. Right now, we're okay.
It was my goal to be able to, I understand what you're saying.
I mean, what is the, what would they, I mean, are we able to do a part-time AIS teacher? Is that available, or does that have to be full-time?
You could. But, you know, Steve also did find.
Oh, no, I definitely, I know, but I mean, you know, we find that 31,000 just isn't, you know, effective, we'll find someplace else where it is going to be effective. Maybe save a program or, you know, keep the sixth grades manager or whatever other programs that we might have to look at, or even sports if we need to reallocate, you know.
Just remember that if we reallocate the 31,000 to AIS, that's 31,000 we have to find from somewhere else.
Well, if we were to get rid of it, what I'm saying is, the summer camp, if it's not effective there, maybe we can find a different way. Or we can have, and I don't know if this is possible or how this all works, but for those people or students who wanted to attend summer camp, is it charge dependent?
You can charge for it.
Not the only.
That I know. I'm not sure about the refundable deposit, but you can charge for education provided, whether it's mandated or not. What I meant is, right now, the 31,000 is part of our proposed cuts for the budget. If we were to use that for something else.
We'd have to, yeah, contract.
We'd have to find some other $30,000 thing to remove from the budget.
Okay, next on the agenda was for us to take up discussion of an option for a two-year phase-in in kindergarten class at Hagan. After several meetings and some discussions, I guess, and I'll start off the conversation by, well, we will all jump in here. I decided that we should revisit this because I think in the previous position the board took is stacked with the fifth, fourth grade at Nassau and the first grade at Hagan. We had decided that having two transitions, one at the beginning of the year and the end of the year, probably might not be the best way to handle that class. And we offered each of them an option to either not or make some other alternative state their home school, go to the other school, and in Nassau's class, an option of going to the middle school a year or. They both chose. What didn't really stick out to me at the time was the fact that kindergartners also make a transition, not necessarily quote-unquote back into a transition, but a transition from wherever they are, either at home, preschool, wherever, to a elementary kindergarten class, and then would have to change schools and do a transition going to that first grade at another school. So in my mind, again, that got me thinking back to that, it's two transitions. So going back to the original point of the board was to try and avoid that. I just thought it was fair to give it one more discussion point here, and we are definitely counting down to the last, the 11th hour of making changes because very shortly we're going to need actually a budget in place. Okay, I'm sorry. Is it better? And so we're counting down to like the 11th hour of getting a budget in place, but I thought it was worthwhile to bring it up one last time and see whether the majority of the board felt that way, or whether it was, you know, just the one option that we gave in the beginning. So that was my thinking on it. I know the superintendent has another point of view that was brought up by some other community members, so I'll yield to her for the moment, and then we'll discuss it as an entire board.
I actually presented the board with nine reasons that I think it's a problem to go with this additional phase-in. The first two involve minimal costs, and they are the least of my concerns. One is that we would need to keep an additional point two of the art teacher for a year, and that would be about $17,000. The other is that we would have to continue moving teachers over a couple of years, and there is some minimal cost involved in that, even when we use our own staff. There is some purchasing of supplies and the actual time it takes them away from other things to do that. The reasons begin to get more significant to me. One of the reasons that we talked about doing this as in terms of grade-level schools was that we would be able to have grade-level meetings more easily between the teachers and with the common core work that has been already mentioned here tonight. What that means is that as the buildings remain, as the grade levels remain separated in terms of the teachers, that's going to be more pull-out time for professional development because that's the only way you can get the teachers together to do that. Another piece of the concern is that we had developed a new schedule for grade-level schools that requires a larger clock of what we call non-interruptive instructional time. That means no pullouts during that period of time, so it's more intense learning. And by phasing in and the way that the sections work in the two buildings, you would not be able to implement that fully for a couple of years. A bigger concern still is that one building, Nassau, would have nine classes, and Hagan would have 20, which is a big difference. Some parents in this very room talked about the effect of an empty building, and 20 to nine is certainly a disparity. Add to that the fact that with that scenario, Nassau, because of the grade levels of them, would have two self-contained special education classes in addition to those nine classes, and two BOSI's classes of special education students because that's where the space would be. It becomes more of a special education school, which is something that we've been trying to eliminate the perception of. Add to that the fact that children at one school would have to make a transition while children at another school would never have to make the transition, and equity was something that we had talked about as a board in terms of equal experiences for children. Because the change of staff would be a gradual one, it'll take the principals longer to develop the culture in the new building, in the new staff building. And research shows that student engagement is directly related to the culture of the building. And finally, elementary school educators whom I've spoken with report that the children will do fine with the transitions, and that reminded me that the transitions are about the people in the buildings, not the buildings. And pointed out that, for example, next year's second graders at Nassau will have transitions to make, even though they're in the same building, they'll have a new principal for the second year in a row, and then we'll have new teachers in their building. So those are some of the contrasting viewpoints. Not to say that I don't understand the concern about the number of transitions, but I just wanted to make sure that the educational concerns from the other aspects were brought out as well.
I mean, I agree with Ralph in at least discussing this tonight in that, thinking about kindergartners, current kindergartners, so they go over to Nassau in first grade, first, second, then they're coming back. So I mean, it was kind of back and forth. So I did not have a problem bringing this up. I think they're at a younger age, more vulnerable. I realized, you know, there's a view of, there's a view of inequity of nobody, so to speak, that's currently in the Hagan building going over to the Nassau community where the second and third graders would be coming over, but at the same time, you know, I felt that it should, you should remember that the current kindergartners going into kindergarten in the Hagan community, you know, would be going to Nassau. So I saw that as, you know, both sides making transitions. Now, I'm not opposed to having the Nassau students stay and phasing this thing. You know, all new kindergartners would go into Nassau, and everybody would stay the same, and we'd phase it in completely. I'm not opposed to that, but when I heard that, you know, that the Nassau community didn't want the fourth, or what was it, they chose to stay at Nassau, I mean, I hadn't heard anything at the time about that issue. You know, and since, you know, there's been, there's been some emails. I'm not opposed to that at all. So when we have comments at the board, feel free to bring that up, okay? I don't have a problem. So basically, what I would say could be an option would be, everybody stays, they go through the system, basically the whole grade level starts kindergarten, all the kindergartners go to Nassau, and we start from there. That's, I'm just saying that's, that's an option. I'm open to that option.
Well, I'm actually opposed to the phase-in plan. I think we lose, now, the financial benefit is not that much the first year that we know, but we lose the advantages that we talked about, that Dr. Powell just mentioned, from going to the grade-level schools. And the issue of the transitions, of the inequity that feels like the Nassau community to have to be shifted and the Hagan not have to be shifted, I think we're all in this together and all have to kind of bear the brunt of the sacrifices that we have to make, and everybody's got to be part of that. And I just think it's, the decision that we made is a board, and we should just move on to it.
I can see the whole point with the, with the kindergartners having.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can hear you. Okay. The whole point with the kindergartners, I kept going back and forth and thinking, you know, they're going to be two years at NASA and before they move back to Egan. Is it good? Is it not good? It's still a transition. They're going through, they're younger, they're going through a lot of transitions, one after the other. And at the same time, I'm thinking, the kids at NASA, the ones who are staying there, yes, they're staying in their school, they're not moving, but they're getting new principals, a lot of new teachers, even though their building is still going to be the same structurally, almost half of the people in the building are going to be different. So that's another transition they're going through, and I'm thinking we need to see how we could handle that, look at the possibilities, maybe what you're proposing might. I was even thinking, not sure if that would work, to start a gradual, not like, to start with the new kindergartners in NASA, and then everybody, and start third grade at Hagan for everyone. Yes, there will be transition there. And I'm just thinking out loud, I might be, I can hear it, I could predict it myself, but we can start third grade at Hagan for everybody. So yes, somebody will be transitioning, but at the same time, we're starting grade-level schools from the beginning for each school.
See, I think I've got that one. I didn't have it before. So what you're saying then is the kindergartners would all go to Nassau, and third grade would move to Hagan. But fourth and fifth would stay in Nassau? No, you're saying fourth and fifth move over to?
No, then that wouldn't work.
No, that's.
No, it wouldn't work.
Okay.
See, it's good to think out loud sometimes.
So, yeah, okay. So basically then, we're down to either the Nassau or the first grade or not.
Obviously, there's been a lot of thought, a lot of things brought up in this. I did not agree with the, you know, whether the exclusions or not exclusions. I understand them completely. The things that I have a problem with is now that we do kindergarten, we stay in a, we're essentially going to a grade level and a neighborhood school, which is not where I think that the district needs to be in the future. So I'm, in reference to being fair throughout the district, and if it's a compromise, it's a compromise. If it feels that we're going back on what we had decided, I don't think so. I think this is the best, what's, the best for the district, it's the fairest to all the students who are going to be affected by this. The families are going to be affected by this. I don't feel that whatsoever might be a sign of weakness on our part. I think it has to do with having phases in and make it work for everyone. So I'm in agreement with the phase-in, you know, kindergartners all go to Nassau. To me, it's the fairest and the safest for all the kids. I mean, we're, you know, having, limiting some of the transitions. I mean, we're, you know, having, limiting some of the transitions. We're going to solve it.
That's different from that, that's right.
Well, what, Mike, what we have talked about.
Yes.
Mike, get it together.
So I have, and I somewhat agree. I mean, I think, I personally think grade level schools is where we need to get to. And we all know that the biggest savings is not in our first year. So savings wise, yeah, there is some, but it's not huge in that first year. It's a huge two years. This would take two years, just like the other would. The only concern, again, that I would have is if that's the case, we're phasing into Nassau because that's the primary grades. So we would have, will we have the space at Nassau? I guess would be my question. So that would be something the superintendent would have to come back to us with and let us know is, you know, next year, there's no question we'll have the space. And the question is the year after and then the year after that. We'll be losing some grade levels to the middle school, but yes, we'll be getting more in because there's more student population at Hagan than there is Nassau. So whether it's logistically possible would be my question more than anything. So does that sound reasonable on our next meeting? After the days like that?
Yes.
Get back. Just on that note, are we going to make this, the next one, if we're going to be working? I mean, I didn't want this to talk about a long range.
It's the budget presentation. We also have a student presentation, I believe, from the MTV Club. And the students are doing videotaping, there's a brief presentation. They want to have a good audience to tell us about what they're doing. So.
Additionally, if there's any, again, what cost difference between the options, obviously.
Just so I'm clear, you're talking about the Hagan phase in so that all students go to Nassau next year for kindergarten.
Correct.
And then you allow the current K1, two students to stay at Hagan and you allow the current 2, 3, 4 students to stay at Nassau. And you're looking at the dollars as well as the space.
And then the following year, it'll be K and 1 at Nassau.
To the upper grades.
Right.
At what time do we have to have this decided and not take any more proposals or decisions?
I really think the next meeting. You know, we've already made staffing changes as a result, I mean, pending staffing changes. On April 9, we have teachers working together in their new grade levels. The actual, the real schedule has to be built completely based on exactly how many sections are in each building and that involve shared staff. So I would say March 47 is the deadline.
Didn't we have scheduled some get togethers kind of with the two schools?
Yes.
With this year?
They've been doing a lot of that. You know, some of those could be postponed if you decide to wait. Some of them, you know, like the coffees do no harm. You know, there have been some coffees already, for example. There's no harm in meeting both principals and talking with them regardless of where the students go. But yes, those things have taken place.
I mean, would they slow down? I mean, I hope that it would continue.
Well, some things, you know, you wouldn't have an orientation for a grade of students that's not going to the other school. I mean, that sort of thing would not continue. I would imagine the coffees would be something that you could do. I know the fourth graders, for example, are going on the Albany trip together. There's no reason not to do that. They've been going to Sharp together for years. You know, it depends on the logic of it. I mean, if it's something that will do no harm by bringing them together and it makes any kind of sense, then we can still do it. If it's something like an orientation and they're not going to that school, obviously there's no purpose in doing it for either the children or the parents.
Okay. Anything else, Rob? Comments to the board? Based on the time, I'm going to go over some basic round rules. First, please state your name and address. Second, please, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. It's quarter to 10. So please do that. One comment per person, please, so one three-minute session, no yielding of time. And please, please, please speak to the board. Do not speak to other audience members or anything else. Please just, please comment to us. Thank you.
Hello, Ian Friedman, 21, Cathy Road. I'm a little thrown. This was unexpected, but not unpleasant on my part, which throws my comments a little awry, but that's okay. First thing I want to address is improving communication. I've been working, as you know, with this Hagan kindergarten transition for a long time. Not as long as other people necessarily with other things, but it's been a couple of months. And to hear arguments come up against the plan at this meeting when I haven't had any communications about them or a time to take or consider what they mean. I would really appreciate from the administration if you can better communicate with members of the community, especially someone who's working so hard on a proposal to work with the board and the administration, what your opposition may be. Does that make sense? I mean, I feel like as members of the community making a proposal, if there is opposition, I'm sort of, you know, hopefully obligated to hear some of that opposition. And I heard some opposition from the community, but not from the administration. And I haven't had time to digest or respond to it in any way. At the last board meeting, I submitted a proposal to lessen the transition of kindergarten students. And if perhaps this other plan doesn't go through, and I think it's a very good one, to discuss definitely, I would like you to seriously consider keeping this on the table as well. My son will have gone to a new school in pre-K, K, first grade and third grade. That's four new schools in five years. And as a parent, like everyone else here, I don't want to believe that transitions will affect my child, but research clearly shows otherwise. Transitions are linked to negative academic, social, and psychological performance, even in the best school districts. And even if my son isn't affected, some of his classmates and friends probably will be, which will impact my son and many others at the school. The proposal I submitted has no significant drawbacks. It's cheap, eliminates transitions, and it's also beneficial for Nassau. You know, would keep their class sizes a little bit smaller and it would, you know, limit, it would limit the risk of students within the class to suffer from some of these negative side effects and therefore limit their Nassau students' exposure to this. And I really appreciate the board members meeting with me to discuss this. In the last week, I've heard significant opposition from Nassau parents. I'm going to keep going. I'll try to be fast. Don't skip it, okay? We see this measure as unfair and I think you're taking a good step to address this. I want to make a few things clear. When I started this, the first steps I took in crafting was talking to parents from both school districts and talking to several parents of Nassau. I asked parents from Nassau for feedback. You know, I talked to people at PTA meetings. I submitted a proposal, like a draft proposal to people at PTA meetings so that they would be able to hear this proposal that originally had included Nassau students. And so at the time, I was not getting any interest from Nassau students. That's one of the reasons Nassau wasn't included in this. So I want to really encourage, wait a second.
No, excuse me. If we have a three-minute time limit, that is our policy and if I don't tend it for one, I have to do it for everybody and that's just not fair to everybody here that would like to speak.
Listen, what I am looking out at is a community that is really angry and frustrated and in some ways, they don't.
I get that and I think this is things we've heard before. And we're not disagreeing with you. I just have, we've got to make some kind of a time limit and we've got to get to the point where people have the right to speak and not walk out of here before it's midnight and not be able to speak. So. So that is the point. Please yield the mic to the next person.
Let's do this, let's yield and then see how long it goes.
That's fair. It's a reasonable time period.
This is the only time when members of the community get to hear from each other. And I think it's really important for members of this community, wait a second.
No, I'm in charge of the meeting, sir. Would you please yield the mic or phone? Excuse me. I'm going to ask people to leave.
This meeting is really fractured right now and it's really angry.
And right now, you're not helping your cause or anybody else's by trying to dominate the entire meeting. So please yield to the next person.
We need to work together better. We need to build community in this district.
Excuse me.
Like now, there's so much anxiety, there's so much.
Please, please, please. Please quiet down. Okay. And if.
I believe your time is done.
Okay, hold on. If we don't stop this immediately, the board will leave, the meeting will end. Do I, okay, so that is the other end of this. So please do not.
I think I want to say, with regard to this grade level transition, either you do it equally. Oh, my name, my name is Janet Johnson. I live in the Nassau area. I also grew up in the Nassau area. My whole family, we have done very well in Scottyville schools. The older sister went on to a very prestigious college and will have been very successful. I'm very thankful for the Nassau teachers that I've had. With regards to grade level school transition, if you cannot do it fair and equally for the whole school district, don't do it at all. And I think a lot of people are underestimating the kids' resilience. Number one, the kids will be doing the transition with their very young friends from the school that they have. They're going to be familiar with the teachers that they see already because some of the teachers will be transitioning with them. Not only that, the research that this man before me has probably broken about is more likely about students who are, for lack of a better word, homeless. They move from state to state. They have to make new friends. Yes, life will be tough with that, but these kids are transitioning with their friends. And I am an educator myself. This year, I have a student who is experiencing, experience, Steven, I'm nervous up here. He's experiencing his third school district. He started in the Bronx. Sometime in November, he went to Westchester. And then in January, he came to my class, having to make friends, fall over again for the second time within three or four months. He has done very well and it all comes from the support of his wonderful parent. So if the parents are behind the kid, it will be fun.
My name is Shemantu. I'm from Nassau. We moved here in this area for a few years now. I have two sons, third grade and kindergarten, both in Hagan. They all love school. They're looking after each other, very good support. And now we've heard that, you know, they even keep an eye on things happening, so we're very glad. Now we're moving to grade level system. I just want to testify that it's, many transitions are really bad in my personal experience. I was born in China. We started first grade, first year. I loved school. I really enjoyed it. I wanted to learn. And then my dad got transferred and relocated to a different city. So I moved along and then for two years and then moved back to same school. I just totally lost it. I faced different faces, different teacher and different school. I just can't, just the environment. So I performed poorly academically and I even can't even get to, almost missed champion to middle school. And China is very competitive with a lot of population. So fortunately, in the later I missed school, I figured out I really should have started hard, but it was quite late. I lost things I already missed and I, you know, I just can't regret those. I don't want that to happen to my son and many kindergartners that are here. You know, you can't ignore the impact on a young life. I really should go and recommend the board to take this, don't make decision lightly and consider the benefit of the kindergartners and many other kids. So I really thank you, boards, for careful consideration, I assure you. But do consider, there are a lot of life that's impacted by this.
I'm Jennifer, at Hagan. I just wanted to say that athletic issues are coming on. I hope that we've started, maybe together before we begin a financial problem and suppose break into the last minute and then we're looking at budget for you now. So I hope those kind of conversations, maybe having to address those questions right now. And also, as far as some of the technology, I agree with all of the details of, or I don't memorize, all the details of our staff, but I do believe we have one network specialist on staff. Is that correct? Or some. Okay, Merit College is open 365 days a year, okay? It has to address server needs for every student 24/7, not only here on their campus, but around the world. You know, many networks like the specialist station. How do we? They have three, but that's a lot more people than our little school here. So it just seems to me here not using our resources wisely. And I also have a call in Tibet to college department that I'm aware of, but I haven't gotten the call back. So I really do think that there's, if there's contracts you can have, you can have, you know, add in personnel or whatever, come in. You have the same person day in, day out, who's paid an hourly wage. Also, the cost of. Oh, sorry. Also, the cost of the. Never mind. Also, the cost of the summer, it was $25,000 for something over the summer for athletics. Twenty, what was it? What was that? What is that for? He said that they have to do some sort of program with summer athletics and his hour rate is $25,000.
Okay, there's a, there's an advisor that runs the labor program over the summer for students. He gets paid a salary.
And how long is he going to do it now?
It's paid pays. I'm not sure how long. I bet it's five years, paid pays before I arrive.
Right, so that's why you probably get $25,000, so, or $25, a dollar an hour. So it seems to me we're high, so we knew we'd start at $25,000 an hour. We start around eight.
Hi, my name's Beth Lee. I have three children, one in Todd, two in Nassau. Moved here from Illinois three years ago. I have a second grader at Nassau and a fifth grader at Nassau, but I lived in the Hagan district. I made that choice when I moved here. Just wanted to say first of all that my daughter would probably make the same amount of transitions as the kindergartner would be from second to, to a new, to fifth grade and then to Todd within that many years. So am I worried about it? No, I think she can handle it. I didn't have any opposition to GLS in the beginning because as a parent, if I'm positive about it, she's positive about it. If I make it a good decision for her, you know, then it's something that she's going to listen to. She's not going to listen to negativity. My question to you is, I hear a lot of talk about Common Core. Is that the main reason that we're looking at GLS right now? Why is it that previously we have not looked at Common Core?
It's just become a, the new state standards. We used to have New York State standards and the commissioner about a year ago decided that we're moving to Common Core.
Okay. If we stay as, if we go into grade level schools. Okay, if we stay as, if we go into grade level schools, what would be the problem with implementing Common Core to, you're having kindergarten state at Nassau, and you're having this grade state at Hagan, and this grade state at Nassau, and everybody's going back and forth, and you're not gonna have the same cohesiveness that you would have. How does that affect how Common Core is gonna make, work in every school?
I guess it's twofold. One is, part of it is the training and the working on the curriculum. And that's essentially what we've been doing all of this year, as well as part of last year. And what we have to do is we pull the teachers out from classes, and they work a couple of days, a few days a year at the grade level for both buildings to develop the Common Core units. That would stay essentially the same until more curriculum got written. By having them together, there would be more opportunity, I mean certainly not a full day, but there would be more opportunity to do it weekly within the building, so that you wouldn't have to pull out the teachers from classes as often. The other piece, in terms of consistency across the buildings, is no different essentially than when we had New York State standards. I mean, just as between two classes.
But my, we're not interrupting you. The difference between what my daughter in second grade is learning at Nassau is completely different than what a friend's daughter is learning at Hagan, the same grade. Nothing is the same. Zero. I mean, I can't even, I mean, do I care that she's not getting too much homework, really? I mean, not really, because you don't have to sit there for five hours and do homework in the second grade, or no. What my concern is, if we can't do it as a school district, two schools, and implement the same curriculum in two schools, and we haven't been able to do that for years, how is it gonna work where we're gonna try and implement one core curriculum for the entire school district?
It's not really one core, I mean, it's...
I mean, but if you're gonna have, a standard curriculum, okay.
I understand that you're talking about a consistency.
There's no consistency right now, and that's my question. Is you move from one school to the other, inconsistency?
That was one of the reasons, it wasn't the primary reason, but it is one of the reasons that we think it's better to have grade level schools.
Okay, so it is one of the reasons why you decided to think grade level schools might be, okay. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Emily Colar, student board. I just have one question, and it is a question about, why do you feel or do you believe that Nassau has a reputation for being a special ed school? You said that before, and I just, I don't understand, why do you think that they have that reputation?
What happened is historically, there was a time, not too long ago, when they did have more special ed classes because when we didn't have enough students at both buildings to have separate programs, so that we didn't have enough students at Hagan to have a separate program, and students at Nassau to have a separate program. The program was put at Nassau because Nassau had more space in the building. So historically, there have been special class programs there that have not been at Hagan that have had combined students from both buildings. But over the years, the reputation has been that Nassau is a special education school.
Okay, well, can I just make a recommendation then? I think comments made like that are really inflammatory. I think that a lot of people get really insulted by that. And I think that because of comments that are made by administrative people, board people, that the animosity that Nassau people feel toward those comments, they then kind of direct in the Hagan direction because of that. And it's not something that we're saying, but I can understand their frustration. I wouldn't like it if you called my school a special ed school. And so I can understand why they wouldn't like it, and I hear comments like that very often, that, you know, the problem is socio-economic, it's this, it's that. And I think that it might be in everybody's best interest to reframe from those comments, because I think it just... A couple of months ago, I stood here and said, if I had known about GLS and this nightmare that is coming, I wouldn't have bought my house. Well, now, I wouldn't have bought my house because there's so much anger here. So many people are so angry, including myself. And so much of it could have been avoided. So much of this was really good. And I just, I feel like rather than trying to bring people together with this, you've separated them. And I wasn't here before, but my impression is that they're separated more now than ever, and that certain comments that are being made is making more of a divide rather than bringing people together. And I think that words are powerful, and I think that in one moment, you're calling a school a special ed school, and in the next moment saying, well, we're all gonna be one big happy family, and... I just feel like it's, you're making it worse instead of making it better. And I think that a lot of misinformation was thrown out in the beginning. And, I mean, there's still people who actually think this is gonna save nine hundred thousand dollars next year. I mean, there are actually people that think that, you know. Personally, I think we're gonna lose money next year when it's all said and done, but we won't get into that. But again, I think that it's time for everybody to start really truly focusing on bringing the people together, because that is not what you are doing. You are causing more of a divide, and comments that are being made, and just, everybody's mad. And now next year, we're gonna throw all our kids together, and everybody's mad, and you think that those kids don't know? My son is in Todd, and he knows all about it. That doesn't affect him in one way or another. He knows all about it. Not because he, I don't think he hears it from me, but who knows what he hears when he's up in his bedroom? But I think you're making it worse, and if you're gonna throw them together, I think comments need to be made in a more positive way. And I don't think calling a school a special ed school is really a way to go.
I didn't call it a special ed school. I said there was a perception of it being a special ed school, and that we're trying to prevent that from continuing. And quite frankly, I think part of the problem is that for many, many years, these perceptions have existed and have not been talked about, because it was, you know, the thing that you don't bring up in public. And it's not new, and I think that people who've gone to the schools for years and years and years, as you said, you're new to the community. I've spoken to many people who said, this has always existed. I am trying to stop it from existing.
Well, that...
Sometimes you have to tell the truth, and you have to talk about what people are thinking to bring it to the surface.
Well, I'm happy to say I never heard anybody say anything about a special ed school. And my son started in Todd, and when I asked him after the first meeting that we had at Nassau, and I heard all this animosity, it was a news flash to me that everybody was so tense and every, I had no idea. And I went home and the next day, I asked my sixth grader, you know, well, is there this divide at Todd? "I don't know." So I said, "Well, you know, what about the boys that sit at the table with you? There's five other boys, you know, where did they go?" "I don't know. We don't talk about that kind of stuff." Now, naturally, being a boy, three days later, when I asked, "Well, did you find out?" "No, I have no idea." So I don't see that it follows through to Todd, and all these kids come together for the last thirty years too. But my point is, is I just think that the inflammatory language is just, it needs to be eliminated, and for it to be chosen more carefully.
I mean, I agree with you as far as what you're saying, the inflammatory language. However, I will tell you, since I was in this school since nineteen seventy-seven, it has been that way. It was Hagan side, and it was Nassau side. And that's, quite honestly, I think it's the best it's ever been, because we actually have parents talking to one another who are from Nassau and are from Hagan. It never happened when I was in school. It didn't. I don't know why, and where it never came from, but it just, it never happened. I'm glad that it's actually, parents own, and from Hagan and from Nassau are actually talking to one another about the grade level school. So you say that it has separated, I think it has reported a little close together, because now there's a common fight, if you will. Do you understand what I'm saying? But before, there was no talk at all. When I was in this school, they had a talk. You got the pad, I was like, what, what is this all about? But I wish it was different, but it was that way since I was here. I hope it changes. I really do.
My name's Marty Schaffler, just third way. Let me use my three minutes to put a plug in for eighty miles from Broadway, which is my ideal position. There are students who were way back in the day that went to Nassau and Hagan, and now they're on stage. One of the two students, who is Lee Ann Cox, Nancy's daughter, co-wrote the plug. So come, come. Let me move to some other question. I have three questions for the board, because I've, I have a sense that people in the audience are thinking ground shifting quicker than in white. First question, and answer it quickly, because it's on my time. Are you committed to GLS as a long-term solution for the pandemic? Will you take a vote as a board to not do GLS? Will you put the vote to the community to not do GLS?
Why not?
I just wanted to be clear. Because I get a sense that people are thinking this is a slippery slope. So I want to make it clear the board sees that different. My other question quickly is, I heard two proposals tonight, right? I heard the original proposal, which is that kids who are in kindergarten, first grade at Hagan, would stay in Hagan for a couple of years in transition. I can see the, I can see the arguments for that. And Mike seems to float the proposal. It's a little different, which means that everybody who's in the district right now stays in the school the rest of. And only new kindergarten students go to Nassau, right? And so I guess you have to sort those two things out, right? And it will be a couple of issues with, I'd be open to either one, because I think it's a long-range goal for a lot of reasons, including cleaning up the mess that I've been hearing about, because there is a divide. My kids are going through the system. I have a kid in college, one in high school, one in fifth grade. They know kids on both sides of Route Nine. It's not, it's not the great river, it's not that port or... But there are animosities. It comes from parents, one, it comes from students. And I think there's up and down with GLS, but I do think one of the things to think about is in the long run, it will be better for the community. Because kids will start from the beginning with one school, it's Packerkill. When they play soccer and football, and they're on that stage, they represent Packerkill. That's what the school is. So I think, yeah, I think we want to continue to think about that. I also think that in past meetings, there's been, I mean, one of the things to clear up is transitions, right? People have really talked about, when, if folks from Hagan went to Nassau, they would not just be going to this school. They would be going to the school with a current principal, what else would be going? With a current kindergarten teacher, who I think were back there, I think the principal, grade teachers, would be going to Nassau. A first grade teacher who was back there, one of the best first grade teachers on the planet.